We'll call the meeting to order. We'll note that all commissioners are present. First item of business then is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? If no changes, would there be a motion then to approve the order of business?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
I'll move. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda. And the first item there, item A, has to do with wastewater backup claims ordinance. And Mr. Kessel will introduce that item.
President Johnson, I'm going to let Attorney Coling introduce that item on my behalf.
It says your name is on here.
He does such a wonderful job with these kinds of things.
All right.
I was thinking Mr. Kessel would do a wonderful job doing this one too. Mr. President Commissioners, the ordinance before you makes some changes to the city's wastewater backup fund. You did look at this proposed ordinance as a report at the last city commission meeting. Did make a couple of changes to the ordinance since that time. One to clarify the language that, A, homeowners or property owners' personal labor to remediate wastewater backups is not covered under the wastewater backup fund. And also that the homeowner or property owner would be required to submit the claim to a private homeowner's insurer, as well as the city would submit the claims and have them adjusted by the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund prior to eligibility for payment out of the wastewater backup fund. This ordinance also clarifies that the limit for payment of claims out of the wastewater backup fund is $10,000 per claim. That would be the maximum that the city would pay to any one claimant. I'd be happy to address any other questions you may have. I think we have got our process down a little bit better as staff to how we handle these claims. And this ordinance will assist us in managing these claims in an efficient and appropriate manner.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard his introduction. Any comments or questions? Mr. Coling, is this 1571?
That's correct. 1571.
At this time, we'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance. If you'd like to comment, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that wishes to comment. Any comments by commissioners? Hearing none then, would there be a motion regarding first reading of ordinance 1571?
Mr. President, move to approve first reading of ordinance 1571.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Item B is reports by Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Johnson. I will take this one.
Okay.
I just wanted to go over with you several of the legislative bills that have been either heard at committee or we have provided input on. You've received a list of those bills. I have some additional bills since the time of the writing of this memo that have been that we provided some feedback on as well. I'm really not going to spend a lot of time on that. As you can imagine, they are -- it's a busy, busy time. 900 bills are being considered by the legislators during this session so far. The largest ones of impact to Dickinson are the surge funding, which is Senate Bill 2103. The surge funding was heard at committee. President Johnson did provide testimony. There were several people providing positive or supportive testimony and none providing negative testimony with regard to that bill. Senate Bill 2126 was the jumpstart bill. This was the governor's bill, similar to surge in a great many respects. Since the time of introduction, the jumpstart bill has been changed and carved up. The DOT early funding has moved from the jumpstart bill to the surge funding bill. So it appears that surge funding bill will be the bill of choice. It was passed by the full senate on a 44 to 2 vote. It'll go to the House now at crossover, and then we'll begin the debate on the House side when crossover occurs. 6040 is another bill that we also had attendance at, and President Johnson did provide testimony on that bill as well. Those are the two largest funding bills for western North Dakota. The surge bill, those funds are primarily available in accounts as we speak. That is not necessarily the case with the 6040 bill. I have with me, and I'll share with you, the revised revenue forecast that was produced and distributed to legislators. This was prepared and distributed by the Legislative Council. It does revise down the biennial estimates of revenue estimates by $4 billion. They are predicting in the 2015 to 2017 biennium, production remaining almost exactly the same as where it is today, about 1.2 million barrels per day. And they're also expecting a price of between $45 and $65 a barrel. So that's how they've prepared their revenue forecasts for the upcoming biennium. They reforecasted the remaining of the 2013-2015 biennium and used $42 a barrel of oil and a similar production number of 1.2 million barrels to finish out this biennium. As you can see, it does distribute the funds then, or make revenue forecast changes for those funds. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that either. There's two specific bills that I want to go over in a little more detail tonight and receive your specific feedback. The first one is House Bill 1430. This is a medical marijuana bill. These types of bills, of course, have been approved in several states throughout the United States. And there is now a bill to introduce the similar procedure in North Dakota. What would be allowed under the medical marijuana bill is you'd be allowed to carry two and a half ounces of cannabis on you at any single time. If you were a cardholder and registered, you could also have six cannabis plants in your possession. You would also -- you would only be able to carry and use cannabis if you had a debilitating medical condition. The bill outlines how you would receive a card. You'd have to carry a card with you at all times so that you could use cannabis. It does outline the fact that you would not be able to be disciplined by your use or discriminated against because of your use of cannabis for medical conditions. So in other words, it specifically states on page seven, line two, if you're an attorney, that you may not be subject to disciplinary actions by the state bar association if you are under the influence of cannabis while being a cardholder. There would be cannabis production and manufacturing facilities that would be licensed and operated by those people who choose to do so. They would be inspected by the Department of Health. And it doesn't outline a lot of the rules for that, and allows the Department of Health to be the rulemaking body with regard to the types of parameters that they would have to comply with. It does have some limitations. You cannot smoke cannabis in public buses or public transportation. You can't navigate or be in physical control of a vehicle while under the influence. You -- an employer could restrict your use of cannabis. A city, we would be able to license the operators, the facilities that would grow the material. We could also implement laws that were more restrict than those in here. But we could not eliminate the use. If the state passes this bill, then we would have to comply locally with the passage of and its content. So I wanted you guys to have some time to look that over, give me your thoughts. I think this is something that's important enough for us to weigh in on as a locality so that our impressions and our thoughts are heard at the statewide level. I don't know if you have any that you'd like to make now. If not, I'll move on to Senate Bill 2375.
Any comments on House Bill Number 1430 for Mr. Kessel? I guess you can move on.
Okay. Senate Bill 2375 is a bill that would form a community facilities district for public improvements. This is a lengthy bill. It's 26 pages long. Essentially what it does is it creates a city within a city, or a city within a county. And it allows that city within a city to issue geodat, to issue other forms of debt. They can also receive revenue to pay that debt off. They actually have a governing body that would be appointed by the city commission if that city within a city is created within the city limits of Dickinson. They would hold elections to issue geodat. They would -- the appointment to the five-member board that would supervise that community facilities district, as I mentioned, would be appointed by you. But the owner of the property, and it has to have 25 percent of the landowners of whatever district outline that they create, to put the -- to create essentially a ballot measure within the city to create a district such as this, and then they hold an election. And if the landowners within the district approve, then the district gets formed. The intent of creating such a district is to allow those people to tax themselves differently than the rest of the city. So for instance, maybe if the downtown chose to create a district, they could tax themselves to hire someone to provide snow removal services. They could improve the streets and replace all the bituminous streets with concrete. They could hire a staff member to promote the downtown and use proceeds from this district to pay for all those services. So it's an interesting concept, and it is being proposed. There was a couple different conference calls to explain further the use of these kinds of districts. They are present in other states, so the concept is being proposed in North Dakota. This bill, I believe, is being heard on Thursday of this week at 10:00 in the Red River Room. So I do need some feedback from you on if you would like the city of Dickinson to take a neutral, a do not pass, or a pass comment. I don't need a final decision this evening, but I do need some input before that vote by committee if we want to provide comment. That's a very quick overview of a complicated bill. So if there's questions, I would certainly take those now.
Mr. Kessel, I think on this bill right today, since the hearing is on Thursday, the city might be better off to be mute on it and study this issue more and learn about it. If it does pass the senate and we don't think it's a good thing, then we can testify when it's before the House Committee and make our views known then. I mean, it's, as you said, it's a fairly complicated thing, and I would want to read through this very closely before I formed an opinion. Mr. Coling, have you read through it at this point?
I have read through the bill, Mr. President. As you say, it's a complicated structure to the bill. I think in theory, it's workable. One of the questions I have is just the implementation of it. I think there are some practical difficulties in setting up this sort of district as far as just staffing it, providing for the ordinary sort of treasury and accounting services that you would need in order to establish a district such as this. And in certain circumstances, I think, you know, we do have the ability as a city to set up special assessment districts for similar purposes, and this may be duplicative of that process.
If this were to pass, it no way -- I'm going to say this, but I'm asking it as a question. I'm assuming it no way obligates our city to do this unless we choose to do it.
That's correct. Or unless someone promotes it from within. And the other comment I wanted to make is that if this district does incur debt of any kind, in no way is the city of Dickinson responsible for that debt. It remains the responsibility of the district itself. So it wouldn't impede our ability to seek future financing theoretically.
I found this bill difficult to read. Maybe just me. The thing that always concerns me about things like this, maybe this is happening in other states and other communities. We try to bring those things into western North Dakota with our fast growth. It's going to be an entirely different application than probably what was intended in another state. I think we all know that this is probably going to be used. If this becomes law, it's going to be used by developing areas of the community, probably. And I think we need to be cautious about it. I need to read it some more to really understand it. It may work well in some situations, but when it gets applied to our fast growth in western North Dakota, it might have some shortfalls.
Just a little bit, I'm looking at it here. It almost reminds me of a home rule charter.
I think the description that I used of creating a city within a city is fairly accurate. It allows you to hire staff. It allows you to do almost everything that we can do as a city. You can enter into contracts. You can enter into debt. You can create revenue by -- through fees. Truly is a city within a city.
Do those revenues take place then of revenues that the city would receive normally from those areas? Would they be, in a sense, taxes and fees on top of their normal taxes and fees?
That is my understanding, President Johnson, is that these areas cannot forego the traditional taxes and fees that the city of Dickinson would levy. So if you have property taxes that you're being levied today, you would be responsible for those and whatever else the district would create. So there would be -- you'd be taxed twice. But the second -- the intent is that second level of taxation would be by your choice. You would be part of that district and be given an opportunity to vote for and/or against the formation of the --
I'm assuming in the establishment of the district, it doesn't take unanimous consent by those within the district boundaries, but it's probably something more than 50%?
You know, it took 25 percent of the landowners to actually call the -- or put the measure on the ballot, 25 percent of the landowners within the district itself. I don't remember reading anything beyond majority vote, but you may be accurate.
Well, if it's majority vote, I mean, you could have some really unhappy people if they're caught up in this district and the majority votes to put on some additional fees or taxes. And say it's 51 percent, 49 percent, you know, vote, and, you know, you've got half your people who aren't very happy.
And in that regard, it's similar to special assessments, although the threshold is higher for special assessments. Yep.
Could they -- and I need to read more, too. Could they set up their own law enforcement, fire protection, their own ordinances?
Technically, yes.
That -- would they overrule our ordinances?
No, I don't think they'd overrule. Maybe you can judge.
Christian Decker, I believe the way the ordinance is set up, it would create an additional level of regulatory authority over this special district. So our city ordinances would still be in effect, and the district could create a regulatory or ordinance standard higher or more burdensome than what the city would have, but not something that would be --
But they couldn't nullify what we have.
Correct.
I'm just saying, with this cannabis thing trailing here, all of a sudden you have a zone that somebody could take advantage of.
Well, I think we need to get better educated. I don't know that as a commission, we could take a position on this before Thursday.
And that's fine, President Johnson. As you stated, we can always testify if it makes it out of committee at crossover.
Well, it'll make it out of committee. Every bill gets voted on, of course, but whether or not it passes the full senate will be the question.
That would conclude my report on legislative issues.
Okay. Well, you want to continue with the Bell's hearing reports?
The next item is the future land use for Section 12 in the West Dickinson Plan area. The piece of property that's been the focal point of discussions at planning and zoning is a piece that is owned by the Provotskis. The landowner has requested some industrial zoning in that area. The recommendation being made by the consultant is residential in nature. We do have Ms. Karen Day here, who can probably speak the best about what's actually happening in that area. And we've also received some feedback from Mr. Provotsky. He's provided some written documentation for you today to advocate that this piece of property be changed from its recommended use of residential to industrial zoning. So introducing it as such, I would ask that either Ms. Day speak to any further questions or --
Mr. Kessel, we have a 5:00 agenda item. If we get into this right now, we'll be interrupting. I'm sure we'll have two speakers. What I'm wondering, I guess I'm going to direct this to Mr. Coling, item 8B is the first reading of the ordinance to adopt. Can we cover both these items at the same time? You know, that is the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the amendment to the Congruency Plan, which is the West Dickinson.
Yes, Mr. President, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah. I hate to make everybody wait till then, but you're going to wait till then anyway because we have 5:00 timetable agenda items.
Very good idea.
So in five minutes, can we cover item three on your report?
President Johnson, the city commission held a special city commission meeting on last week, late last week. The only agenda item was the approval of a liquor license for Wildcat Pizzeria. Because of the hastiness of which we held the meeting and approved that license, we wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that that special city commission meeting was held. It was held on Friday, January 30. There was a quorum president of the commission, and you did vote to issue the liquor license to Wildcat Pizzeria. The circumstances by which that vote was needed was the city sent out letters to request renewal. We did not receive back the renewal from Wildcat Pizzeria. We did contact the Wildcat Pizzeria's ownership group, and they still did not make the necessary application and payment for the liquor license. We did send the police department representative to the facility. We removed the liquor license, and then there was -- we became aware that there was an internal communication issue between the store located here in Dickinson and the home office, which is in Michigan. Because of that internal communication issue, the renewal did not happen. I spoke to the owner of Wildcat Pizzeria. He was complimentary of city staff and recognized the reason that it was not renewed was held within his organization. So because of the Super Bowl and because of your graciousness, you did decide to hold a special meeting and issue that license on Friday, the 30th, and allow them to operate during the Super Bowl weekend, which he was very grateful for.
This is not an on-sale, off-sale liquor license. This is a restaurant license.
That's correct, President.
And the annual renewal fee is how much?
Less than $1,000.
Okay. And by the time we met on Friday, they had, whatever the amount was, it was -- they had paid?
Yes. They made complete application. They had paid the fee. They were in compliance after that. The only remaining issue was city commission approval. I do not have the authority, nor does any other city staff, to issue that license because it did not exist. It had lapsed. If it was suspended, that may be a different issue, but because they didn't have one, the city commission had to act.
Yeah. It's an annual license. It has to be renewed. We send out the renewal letters at the end of the year, and everybody normally just renews them, so.
That's correct. And this is because it is a restaurant license. It is unlimited in nature, so there is no issues of, you know, returning back to the city or reissuing it.
Are there comments by commissioners? Mr. Steiner?
Who's going to make the motion? Mr. Coling, we did formally act on this on Friday. I think out of the abundance of caution, we're revisiting it just because the noticing was rather tight.
There would be no motion required. Your meeting last week would suffice to provide for the immediate issuance of that license. And we did provide notice to all the parties and anyone else under the open records and open meetings law for that special city commission meeting, so there is no additional action that is required at this point.
I think we're a little bit sensitive to the, again, the tightness of the noticing the meeting, and I think maybe some comments that some of our commissioners had heard regarding the closure of, I guess they weren't closed, but the restriction to not sell alcohol for a few days. Any other comments? All right. Then does that conclude your reports?
It does. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it's 5:00 then. We'll go to the timetable agenda. We have a vacation item there regarding a street, and Mr. Coling will introduce that item.
Thank you, Mr. President Commissioners. This item is for a vacation of a street. This is a platted street. It is, if you're familiar with it, within the Mobile Home Park along 21st Street. This, although this is a platted street, it is not a constructed street. It does not provide any access for emergency services or anyone else in that area. And I understand from the property owner that they do have some drainage issues with respect to that area and request the vacation of the street in order to provide for some more appropriate drainage within that Mobile Home Park. The street is Fifth Avenue East from 24th Street to 26th Street. We did -- We did contact all of the affected utility companies, and there are no utility structures within that street. So all the utilities have signed off, as well as city engineering signed off on the vacation of this street. For your record-keeping, this would be Resolution 02-2015. City staff would recommend approval. Available for any questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Are there any comments or questions by commissioners?
Mr. President, move. We approve the vacation of said street.
Second.
We have the motion in the second to approve the resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Okay, we'll go down to the non-time table agenda. Go to engineering. Item A there is a KLJ Task Order S9. And on here it says Assistant City Engineer Marshick will present. She's not here.
Ms. Marshick is out today. I think Mr. Zeroff will present that.
Mr. Zeroff will present this. Thank you.
President Johnson, Commissioner, thank you. This is KLJ Task Order Number Nine, State Avenue North Urban Reconstruction from 12th Street West to 21st Street. This task order addresses work associated with the Design and Construction Administration for the State Avenue North Project. This work includes reconstruction of State Avenue from 15th Avenue West to 21st Street, and it also includes lighting from 12th Street West to 21st Street. This will be a minor arterial road, having three lanes, two travel lanes and a center turn lane, with curb and gutter, sidewalk, trail, and lighting. The contract amount is $821,400, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Zeroff. Are there comments or questions regarding this item? Would the intention be to bid this project and start construction yet to issue on it?
That is our intent. It's on our 2015 CIP list.
Anything else? Would there be a motion regarding the either approval or disapproval of the task order?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'll be abstaining from the vote, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other discussion? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. Chair votes aye, so the motion carries.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commissioner. Did you want me to continue?
I think we'll go right to Public Works and let you begin with the 2014 Annual Stormwater Report. If you get to 5:10, I'll interrupt you, and we'll go to the timetable.
It should be quick. Thank you. Enclosed in the packet, digital packet, and I did hand out a hard copy for you also, is the 2014 Annual Stormwater Report. This report is required to comply with federal regulations on the Phase II stormwater management program. The approval by the governing body is required, and it's part of what they call the MS4, the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Discharge Permit. So Duane Zostapool with the Storm Utility Division has put it together, and staff recommends approval, but I'll sure try to answer any questions I can.
Okay. Well, this was in our electronic board book. I hope you all got a chance to read it. Are there comments, questions? I thought it was very well done. Stormwater is a very large issue and important issue. It looks to me like our staff is on top of things. One of the things I noticed in reading through here is there were several examples of spills or, you know, I saw, I think where a manhole had collapsed, but any number of things that can occur, and they were very good about showing, here's the problem, here's the before, and then after they remediated the problem, we were seeing photographs and commentary on the remediation. But I thought it was a good report.
Thank you, President Johnson, and this is our full year that we've been doing the stormwater, and so we continue to try to improve.
I thought it was good, too. I suppose by the time you do this next year, we'll have the HDR study.
Correct.
Probably have to incorporate some of that work, I suppose, huh?
Some of that, probably.
Are there any other comments, questions about it? Not? Would there be a motion to approve the 2014 Annual Stormwater Report?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Mr. Zeroff, I think we can do item B here.
Okay. The next item I have is at Apex Task Order for the design and construction of the reuse water line from the Dakota Prairie Refinery, old north to Old Highway 10, near the intersection of 116 and 10. This project is currently our number eight on our 2015 capital project list. The project would include a pipeline from the current end of the reuse water line near Dakota Prairie Refinery, north to highway, the intersection of Highway 10 and 116. I have a number of bullet points here. If you have any questions, I could go through them real quick, President Johnson, if you want.
Go ahead. Yeah, we have time.
Current industrial potable water fill station we have now is off Broadway, and that's for a potable system that requires trucks to go through town. These are just bullet points. In 2014, we sold 43,500,000 gallons of potable water to our current water vendor. In 2014, Southwest Water increased our cost of water sold that we have to pay them, actually it was fourfold what they are charging us in 2014. And with Southwest Water, we have a current daily maximum use of 6 million gallons per day for the potable water. We have approved a reuse booster station at the water reclamation facility, and that project will be completed in the spring. And that booster station will give us capacity to send and sell all of our treated wastewater through that reuse line. Currently, we have one reuse water contract with Dakota Prairie Refinery for a maximum of 500 gallons a minute, and at our current wastewater usage, we have up to 2,000 gallons a minute available. Getting the reuse line from the current location to DPR, current location at DPR to Highway 10 or Highway 16, 16, excuse me, Highway 10, gives us multiple options. I feel it gives us options to go in many directions and to be able to use that water for development and public use. The proposed fill station is a, proposed for this project is a package fill station that we could be moved and used elsewhere if we wanted to, and selling our available reuse water brings in revenue that can be used for our debt service. Those are just some quick points I wanted to put together for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Zeroff. You've heard his introduction and comments. Are there any questions or comments by commissioners?
Do we have a specific location that we know we're going to?
We don't yet, no.
We're just getting it up to Highway 10.
Getting up to 10 and looking at, looked at some different property owners there and what, you know, locations. We don't have a specific location in mind yet.
Other comments, questions? I had an opportunity to visit the refinery here a few days ago, and visiting with the contractor and the operator of the refinery, they were very complimentary regarding the quality of the reuse water that they're receiving now, that they're testing. So I think the water more than meets their expectations, so... Well, would there be a motion regarding Task Order Number 15?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have the motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go back to the timetable agenda, and there is a couple of items. First is a vacation item, and Director Millstone will introduce these items.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, the alley vacation is going to be handled by Attorney Cole.
Okay.
Mr. President, Commissioners?
You need to put this down if that's the way it's going to be.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this resolution provides for the vacation of an alley. The alley is a 20-foot-wide alley located on Block F in the Mezzersmith and Simpson Second Edition. All of the utility companies have signed off on the vacation of the alley, as well as city engineering. There is one utility company that does have a cable in the alley to be vacated, and this vacation would be subject to and conditioned upon the property owner granting an acceptable easement to Century Link, the affected utility. There is an easement document that the parties have traded, and we expect that as soon as this resolution is approved, that easement document will be signed by the parties as well. This would be Resolution 03-2015. City staff would recommend approval, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. You've heard his explanation, introduction. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Now, Mr. Millstone, I think the next two items are yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commission members. The first special use permit is a request for a telecommunications tower, special unit, special use permit for Buell Consulting. The site is situated at 3031 Energy Drive, and the property is approximately seven hundredths of an acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. And I'm available for any questions about that tower.
Are the conditions part of the resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. All of the conditions are stated within the resolution.
Okay. And this is number 2017?
This would be Resolution 04-2015. This is a resolution.
I thought we did use 2015 on the first street vacation.
These are the numbering of resolutions goes by number and the year in which it has passed. So the street vacation would have been Resolution 02-2015. The alley vacation was 03-2015.
Yes.
And this resolution would be 4-2015.
I should go home early. So any comments or questions regarding this resolution? Yeah, it's a special use permit, but it's covered by a resolution? Not? Is there a motion regarding?
Move, we approve Resolution 4-2015.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries.
Mr. President, item number two is a request for a telecommunications tower, special use permit for Buell Consulting. The site is located at 4141 15th Street, and it should be west, and the property is approximately 22 hundredths of an acre. Planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval, subject to conditions.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions by commissioners?
Mr. President, just to note, the copy of the resolution that's in your packet does have an incorrect address on there. It's listed as 15th Street North, and it should be 15th Street West. We have corrected that in our documents, and we'll have that corrected for the final signed copy.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Any other comments or questions? Not? Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Millstone?
That's all I have right now, Mr. President.
Okay. Well, we have 5:15 a timetable item, and that's here from the Rough Rider Commission and Justin Olson.
Thank you, guys, for having us here. What we're here for is to talk about the fireworks that the city has helped the Rough Rider Commission with before. And what we're doing is we're trying to get money, funding for the fireworks. Rough Rider Commission, as you all know, is just a sponsorship. Everything that we do is on a sponsorship level, and the only sponsor that we have for the fireworks is the city. We don't have a major sponsor like we do for the Derby or anything like that. So the city is, the city is who we turn to for the sponsorship for the fireworks, so... And our cost for the fireworks, just like everything else, goes up, so we're here to ask for more money, just like anyone else would, I guess.
Did you have a specific amount, Mr. Olson?
What our, what our contractor asked for, what it costs for to put just the fireworks on, just what our check goes out, is $15,000. So that's what we're here to ask for, is $15,000 for the fireworks.
And how much of an increase is that from last year?
I believe the city gave us $6,750 last year.
Did that cover the full amount last year?
No. Nope, it never has covered the full amount. And our fireworks, and this is our last year for our contract for our fireworks that we have with Lou's Fireworks. Matt Hintz, he's the chair for the fireworks committee on the Rough Rider Commission.
Have you made up the difference or shortfall in the past?
Through, through other sponsorships also. Like I say, we don't, as everyone knows, fireworks is done for free, you know, everything. And there's other costs that go into the fireworks besides just paying the contractor Lou's Fireworks for the fireworks. I mean, we lodge those guys, we feed those guys, we pay insurance, and our insurance, again, is going up again. It's going from a million-dollar liability to 2 million, so... So there's, there's other costs that come involved with it, too, you know? And all, all of our volunteers, you know, we're a volunteer organization. We're there that night, and we sign up for it, so we're not complaining. But we're, you know, we're saying, we clean up after Lou's Fireworks. We clean up after everyone that parks around in that facility on State's Avenue around the rodeo arena. We clean up that. We're there the next morning cleaning it up, you know? You guys are helping. Welcome to come on and help us if you want. But, but you know, so there's time involved. There's time involved with Matt, who is a volunteer, but there's time for that, and there's other, other costs. There's, what was it he, they asked for a little bit more?
For additional insurance.
For, for the additional insurance, they asked for, they asked for more, so... And like everything, you know, we, we get, we get positive praise for our fireworks, just like the city does. We get negative on it, too. So we want to bring, we want to bring a better show if we can, if we, if it's possible to do, so...
Mr. Kessel, if this is going to be an annual request, can, I think I noted, you noted in your budget memo that, or in your meeting memo, that you would have them make this request when all the other... request when all the other organizations are making their subsidy requests?
That's correct, President Johnson. It'd be our intent to invite the Rough Rider Commission annually to come to the subsidy meetings that we hold. They can then make their request along with everyone else, so that you're considering them in totality, along with all the other requests that are received, rather than individually like this. That allows you to plan for your following year, and you'll know the amount that you would receive then, once that budget is approved.
Okay. I have a question then. Last year, we were here, what was that request for when we came?
You had a secondary amount of seventy-five hundred that was provided because of the state's Hundred Twenty-Fifth Anniversary? Is that the number you're asking or inquiring about?
We came to the committee meeting last year, Dwayne Wolf and I were requesting money for the fireworks, and I believe it was for the Two Thousand Fifteen fireworks, that money? And then we were asked to come back to this meeting. So, I guess I might be a little confused on what.
We have a budget process that for these kinds of requests, we just, we have a special time, a special meeting in the fall, and we would just have you make your request then, so next fall, you'd be making your request for Two Thousand Sixteen, along with about a dozen or so other organizations. That way, formerly, if it passes at the budget, then you don't have to come back again and do this. So, that doesn't affect your request tonight, but on a go-forward basis, that's what we try to do with the Rough Rider Commission.
Okay. Sounds good to us, too. Streamline the question.
So are there any other questions or comments here from Mr. Olson? What is your desire? Would you like to act on this tonight, or would you like to think about it for two weeks? And we could have Mr. Kessel put it on the agenda. It is a fairly significant sum, and it's, the amount you're requesting is, you know, quite a bit above what we've been accustomed to doing.
Yeah, we understand that also.
What do you want to do?
I'm going to vote for whether we do it this week or in two weeks.
Yeah, I'd agree with Carson. You know, it has a big impact on the community. It is our part of Rough Rider Days, something that the whole community enjoys, whether they come out to the site or not. You can see the fireworks from just about every vantage point in the community, and I'd agree with Carson. I'm going to vote yes for it either way, so.
I will too. So, I mean, do we need a resolution, or do we have to craft something?
I think we'll just need a motion, if you're in favor of approving the request, and I would recommend that that motion also include the source of funds, which would be the hospitality sales tax.
A motion to approve the funding of the fireworks for the Rough Rider Commission.
Second. And the source of funds?
And the source of funding.
Which is the hospitality tax. That's your.
That'd be my suggestion.
With the caveat that they'll come to our general sessions from this point on for future requests, right?
Yes, Commissioner Altman, we'll make sure that they get an invitation to attend those subsidy meetings. We generally hold those in June or July.
Okay.
The amount we have in the motion is fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing done, then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Zurov, I think we can go back to you, and if you have some reports that you'd like to make.
Thought I was done.
Well, it says update on road maintenance. Did you want to say something?
What does? The only thing I was going to bring up is we had a lot of freeze thaw on our patches from construction. We were having some difficulties getting the contractors who were responsible for some of those patches be timely and repairing. What we've decided to do is all complaints on all these patches go through Public Works, and if they don't, if we can't get the contractor to fix it timely, we're going to, we will fix it. We will try to improve as fast as we can. So now that it's frozen again, we won't have those issues, hopefully. Call it FAS again, but abnormal weather really created havoc on some of our streets.
Right.
So I just wanted to tell anybody, if you have the street issues, to call our Public Works number at two four five six seven nine seven nine, and we'll try to take care of it as soon as we can.
Okay.
Mr. President, I've got a question, Mr. Zurov. Will you then bill this time to the contractor?
That is our plan. If they didn't do it timely, we will try to bill it to the contractor and/or the project, however we can do it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Zurov? All right. I think we'll go to planning, and Mr. Millstone, I think we can get your first item in there, which is a final plat. We'll let you introduce that.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is final plat for the Rhindell subdivision. The site is generally located in the northwest quarter of Section Fourteen, Township One Thirty-Nine North, Range Ninety-Six West. Site is approximately five point three acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, and I think if I got my numbering straight, this is Resolution Oh Six Dash Twenty Fifteen. So any comments or questions for Mr. Millstone? Is there a motion regarding Resolution Oh Six then?
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have the motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Well, then we'll go back to the timetable agenda. At Five Thirty, we will be introducing and giving the oath of office to some of our police officers. Mr. Kessel, would you like to introduce us further?
Thank you, President Johnson. You've stated very well, I think Police Chief Dossinger has a couple of comments before I administer the oath of office.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. At this time, I would like to introduce to the community and to the city commission, Dixon Police Department's newest members, Officer LaShawn Pickstock. Officer Pickstock is originally from Nassau, Bahamas. He is a graduate of Dickinson State University with a bachelor's degree in exercise science and had attended the peace officers training program at Lake Region State College. Officer Pickstock started with our department in January.
I'm Officer Zachary Stroh. Officer Stroh is a Dickinson native and received his law enforcement training at Lake Region State College. Officer Stroh started with our agency in January. Officer Samantha Wayne. Officer Wayne is originally from Tucson, Arizona. She's a graduate of the University of North Dakota with a bachelor's degree in anthropology and criminal justice. Officer Wayne had attended law enforcement training at Lake Region State College and previously employed with the Stark County Sheriff's Office. Officer Wayne started with our department in October.
Will support, obey, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States. State of North Dakota and the City of Dickinson. To the best of my ability. And that I will strive always to meet the highest ethical standards. Implicit in my employment and in the furtherance of the best public interest. Congratulations and welcome to the committee. As Chief Dossinger announced, my name is Samantha Wayne. I am originally from Tucson, Arizona. I moved to Grand Forks in Two Thousand Seven to attend the University of North Dakota. I graduated the University of North Dakota with a bachelor's in anthropology, which is a little different for an officer, but I enjoyed it quite a lot. I did focus in a minor in criminal justice. I then attended the Devil's Lake Police Academy for Lake Region State College in August of Two Thousand Twelve. Upon graduation, I actually moved out here to Stark County and started my employment with the Sheriff's Department. And then in October, I moved over to the Police Department.
Do you have any special guests in the audience?
I don't.
Okay.
Nope.
And then Officer Stroh?
Hi, my name is Zachary Stroh. As Chief Dossinger stated, I am a native from Dickinson. Grew up here my whole life. I was born in Brookings, but we moved up here shortly after that. Graduated from DHS in Two Thousand Eleven. Shortly, I started working shortly after that, got married, I got two kids, and then this fall, this last fall, I put myself through the academy in Devil's Lake and applied with Dickinson Police Department and got my job, so I'm here.
Well, welcome. And again, do you have anyone in the audience here?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Officer Pickstock?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is LaShawn Pickstock, originally from Nassau, Bahamas, way down south where it's nice and warm. But I went to Dickinson State University and got a bachelor's degree in exercise science, some in kinesiology, and minors in graphic design and coaching. Came here in Two Thousand Six, graduated in Two Thousand Eleven, and got married and had a little girl named Sabrina Pickstock, which is three, she's three years old. Also have a stepdaughter, Jasmine Barry. And now we have another one on the way in July, and hopefully it isn't a girl, but you'll deal with that when the time comes. And I'm happy to be at Dickinson and in the future in Dickinson, and I put myself through the Lake Region State College last fall and graduated in November.
Okay, well, you know Dickinson is a banana belt of North Dakota.
Yes, it's always cold, but something I can never get used to, but get acclimatized a little bit.
Yeah.
And I think my wife and daughter was in here, but she's probably in the bathroom or doing something with my daughter.
I see Holly back there.
Okay, there she is.
All right, well, welcome.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kessel, do you have a couple of more to administer?
We do. We have two additional officers that I'd like to swear in.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
State of North Dakota and the City of Dickinson? To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will strive always to meet the highest ethical standards.
And strive always to meet the highest ethical standards.
Implicit in my employment and in the furtherance of the best public interest. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you and welcome aboard. Thank you.
Chief Dossinger, do you want to say something before?
Yes, President, I can give a little background on Officer Wise and Officer Hoppenen. Officer Wise is originally from Tustin, California. He's a graduate of the University of North Dakota with a major in forensic science and a minor in psychology and criminal justice. Officer Wise attended law enforcement training at Lake Region State College and also Gold West College in Huntington Beach, California. He has previous, his previous law enforcement experience includes the city of Williston and the city of Tustin. Officer Wise started with our department in December. Officer Chad Hoppenen is originally from Fergus Falls, Minnesota. He's a graduate of Minnesota State University in Mankato with a bachelor's degree in law enforcement. Officer Hoppenen received his law enforcement training at Hibbing's Community College in Minnesota. Officer Hoppenen was previously employed with the Stark County Sheriff's Office and started with our department in September.
Well, Officer Wise, start with you, and you can correct anything Chief Dossinger said.
As he said, I am from Tustin, California. I was born in Grand Forks, and my fiance is in the process of selling her condominium in California, and we're looking forward to putting our roots down in a community where we actually want to raise children.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
And Officer Hoppenen?
Hoppenen, yes. Like Chief said, from Minnesota, got my education there. I always had a passion for law enforcement, followed some footsteps of some relatives. Came out here kind of during the boom, and this is where I'm at, and this is where I plan on being, and I'm excited to be here and appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, welcome. And do either of you have anyone in the audience that you want to?
A thousand miles away right now.
A thousand miles away, okay.
I've got a friend.
You have a friend?
Wongler.
Okay, well, welcome. Well, we appreciate you all being here tonight, and we wish you much success here in Dickinson. Chief, anything you want to add?
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, we're down to Item Eight B. This is the West Dickinson Plan Amendment to the Two Thousand Thirty-Five roadmap to the Future Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Millstone, anything that you want to say before we start?
I'd just like to say that the reason we're here is to consider amending the Dickinson Comprehensive Plan through adoption of the West Dickinson Area Plan. Adoption of this plan would result in text amendments, amendments to the future land use map, and amendments to the transportation master plan. This will be the first reading for the proposed amendments. And with us here tonight is the project manager from KLJ, is Karen Day. So if you have any questions, I'd like you to direct them to her.
Okay. Well, what we'll do here is always when we have readings of ordinances, we ask for public comment. So before we start with the public comment, I'll just verify this is ordinance Fifteen Seventy-Two, and ask if there are any comments first by city commissioners. If not, then we would take comments from the public. We would just ask that you come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. And Ms. Day, I think we'll start with you, since you're already halfway up here, if you want to make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. My name is Karen Day, and I'm a planner with KLJ. The, here to answer any questions on the overall plan, if you have any. And then I have a handout which is coming across. Of all of, we have sixty-one hundred acres within this West Dickinson study area, and this particular piece has been the most challenging of all, as I mentioned when I was here the last time. The exhibit that you have has little pieces of other maps on it, and, you know, it shows that the existing use on this property is agriculture. The spots that are on the map are two wells, and we talked about those the last time that I was here. And the parcel is split by a flowway or a creek that goes into Patterson Lake. The surrounding properties on the east is, as you can see by those maps, there is a row of single-family homes that they are currently zoned R-1. On the south is the railroad, and beyond the railroad is Patterson Lake and the park. On the south is the railroad, and beyond the railroad is Patterson Lake and the park. On the west, as you can see on the aerial that's there, is the Bakinola Express. And on the north is Highway 10, and on the other side of Highway 10 is another row of single-family homes that again is zoned R1. The zoning on site is agriculture. On the east side of the creek, and on the west, as you can see by the figure, is zoned both industrial and commercial. The issues that, as I said, this piece has been very challenging for us. The issues have basically been compatibility with the existing uses. Compatibility between proposed industrial and the park to the south, the railroad, and the residential. So our recommended solution to this was to divide the property in half where the creek is, to have the west side of the property be designated on the future land use map as West Dickinson Industrial, and the east side of the property to be designated as residential, the existing category that's already in the, in your comprehensive plan, which has a maximum density of up to 20 units an acre. That's what our recommendation is. I mean, it's the compatibility is the issue. Compatibility between industrial and residential, so where does that line come? And compatibility of the industrial traffic, the road between the existing industrial park and those homes, if any or all of that property would be designated as industrial. And compatibility with expanded industrial and the park, recognizing that the railroad is there, the park is on the other side. And the mixing of traffic between the single-family residential traffic, potential industrial traffic, and traffic of people going to the park. So that is our recommendation. We have thought, you know, long and hard about this piece, and our recommendation stays, you know, remains as it is. We recommend that you go forward with the overall plan, and on the land use that this property be designated as it's shown on the map. And the little piece that you have shows it as, as a split, the west side being industrial and the east side being residential. I'm happy to answer any questions on the overall plan or on this particular piece, which is the only piece that the designation has been, you know, under discussion since, since we started.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Day. Any comments or questions for her?
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment?
Mr. President, Commissioners, I'm Mark Prabatsky, counsel for the landowners of the property. We were here on the 20th. I think the property's been challenging. I hope Ms. Day would agree with me, not because of me.
You've been very cooperative.
Thank you. It's because of the layout of the land. And to be honest, I was a bit surprised to see this on the agenda. I know I submitted a letter on the 26th. I think I did it more to recap the comments I'd made at the last meeting. I think Commissioner Jackson had made some good points about what you're really looking for is flexibility. This is a guide for the future, and that's all we're looking for as well. I mean, we trust your judgment. We know it's going to come up eventually when someone wants to develop it, and I think you'll consider it at that point. So again, we're just looking for flexibility. Your comments last time talked about flexibility. I can use those if I have a developer come, and if they're, they feel like their hands are tied by the proposed land use. I think there's been plenty of comments made that it's not set in stone, it's the guide. And so that's really what we're looking for here. I'd love to see more industrial toward the railroad tracks, simply a road that would go south so that that area could be used, but, you know, until I have a proposal, a plan to present to you, I think my hands are a bit tied. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, but again, I didn't mean to create a dispute.
Thank you, Mr. Prabatsky. Are there any comments or questions for him?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak on this proposed ordinance? Mr. Cole, and I'm trying to remember, are we going to do a public hearing in between first and second reading here?
Yes, Mr. President, that's the plan, is to take first reading today and a public hearing next time.
Right. Well, good. So if there's no one else that wishes to speak, Commissioners, any comments by you?
I think we're right where we should be. I think it's shown the way it should be shown. Previous comments, I think, speak for themselves, and I think we should approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other comments? Hearing none, then, is there a motion regarding the first reading of 1572?
I will make that motion.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. So then, just to remind everyone, at our next meeting, there'll still be a chance for public comment, and then a meeting after that, we would then act on the second reading of the, of the ordinance. Okay. I think that brings us then to item C. Mr. Millstone, and this is the South Park Third Annexation.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commission members. This ordinance provides for the annexation of, and the correct title now should be State Avenue, South Park Edition. Later on, I can explain why that's been changed. It's an approximately 2.11 acre parcel located southerly of 8th Avenue Southwest and easterly of the extension of State Avenue South. The applicant is a sole owner of the annexed property. Notice of annexation has been published and sent via certified mail to Stark County as required by law. City staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Millstone. This is the second reading of ordinance 1570. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is no one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments or questions by Commissioners? Not, is there a motion regarding the second reading of 1570?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Are there any items by city Commissioners? Not, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. This is, this is any public item you wish to comment on?
I didn't need to butt in front of anybody if they were ahead of me, but my name is Janine Stenzel. I am the customer relations coordinator for the postal service, and I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to talk to you about a couple of things regarding the postal service. One of the things that we do in some of the larger cities is start a consumer advisory council, and we have done that in Dickinson, and we have about 14 members, and we are looking for feedback from community, from the community. And so we are out talking to, we've talked to the county commissioners, and also talking to you folks at the city and some other agencies or organizations that we'd like to talk to also. But the Consumer Advisory Council is a way that we, looking for ways to improve the postal service or improve communication in the postal service with the community. And so we use that council to help us make improvements and also to communicate with the, the community. The supervisors and the postmaster are also a part of that council also. We are going to be meeting on February 12th at the Ramada at noon. That's our next meeting, and I just wanted to let you guys be aware of that. And I'm also going to be passing out some information about the council and also include my phone number in there too, so that if you have questions or concerns or any input for the council, you can use my cell number. Part of my job is, is to facilitate issues with any of the offices in, on the western part of North Dakota. So if you have any issues or whatever, you can feel free to use that number. Also wanted to talk to you about some of our hiring concerns in Dickinson. I know everybody is kind of up against the same issues, but just to let you know that we are trying to do a big hiring push for the Dickinson Post Office. We're looking for carriers, clerks, and rural carriers. So it's an excellent career. It's a career that you can take with you if you do decide to leave the community or move. And there are great benefits that go with it too, that the average pay is about 20 bucks an hour. So I just wanted to put that out there because we've been struggling with that issue. So, does anybody have any questions for me?
So if someone is interested in a career with the postal service, how do they go about applying? Who do they contact?
They can contact me, and I can kind of walk them through it. There is a, every, every single applicant needs to go through the website.
Okay.
And they build the profile and then apply for the jobs that are listed there.
So they do this online, then?
Everything is online, yep.
That's the first step?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
President Johnson, I have one.
Mr. Castle.
Is the meeting that you mentioned on February 12th, I assume you're mentioning it here because it's open to the public?
It is.
And you'd like as much attendance as possible?
That'd be awesome.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yep, thank you. Yep. All right. I've got a handout, and I just started to dishanding you.
Yes, you may.
And the very last item on there is my phone number. So if you have any issues with the postal service or with any suggestions or any items brought forth at the council meeting, feel free to call me.
Okay, thank you.
I had the opportunity to attend one of the first meetings with Senator Hyde Camp, and it was a very good meeting, lots of public input, current and past postal employee input. And so if you've had any concerns or ideas with how you want your postal service in this community and the surrounding area to look at, I'd encourage you to go to the meeting. It was a, when I attended was very good. The dialogue was very open, and with Senator Hyde Camp's involvement and the postal service' involvement, I saw a lot of changes take place.
Yep.
Almost immediately.
Yep.
So again, if anybody in the community has any concerns, definitely want to come to the meeting.
And I, and they will be invited to this meeting also, Hyde Camp, you know, his offices, so. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the commission?
I'm Darryl Payne from Dickinson, and I'm here to make a request, and it has to do with the Dickinson Municipal Code. You'll see on the top of the sheets that I haven't passed out, and I'll read just that first sentence there. It says, "This is for permits for carnivals." It says, "No person shall, within the sealim setup, run, operate, or conduct any itinerant carnival." And it goes on to say why. And my request is that you change the wording and just eliminate the word "itinerant." Then it would say, "No person, any carnival." Because right now, I didn't know what that word meant until Mr. Cole told me it's traveling. So because of that, any local carnival is not covered under all these, you see all the things underneath there. They're not covered by that, because that's for an itinerant carnival. Now, they do have that word under A, the second sentence, they have "A itinerant carnival," and that's for that particular paragraph, and that I agree with to leave, because that's for traveling carnivals when they come and they set up outside of a main building. It's just, you know, somewhere in the city. And the reason I would like to have that changed is because after going to the Dickinson, or the Trinity Mardi Gras, then on Monday, I went to the city hall to ask to see the carnival permit. And Rita told me that the city has never issued a permit for that carnival or any local carnivals. And I asked, I asked her why, and she didn't know, so she set up a meeting. I met with Mr. Cole on last Tuesday. And after going through all about the carnival, then I asked him, you know, why the, the local carnivals wouldn't be having, get a permit. And then he showed me this, that that one word changes the whole, I would say the whole chapter, because this whole chapter, the way it reads right now is just for a traveling carnival. We have, and I, and I told Mr. Cole, and I says, "Well, what, what you're saying then is, the city has no oversight on any carnival." I'm talking about local carnivals. And I feel the city should, because I went to the Mardi Gras this time again, and I found two games that were in violation, that there were, that was illegal gambling. And I have, I filed a complaint with the police department, and then they, the, one of the officers that was sworn in was one of the ladies I talked to at the carnival. And so I filed my complaint, and then they put their report, and it's been sent to the state's attorney, Tom Henning, and it's on his desk right now, and I don't know what the result will be of that. But I was just amazed that the city doesn't have no oversight. The way I get it, Mr. Cole, am I correct in saying that? It's for a local carnival?
Mr. President, Commissioners, the wording in the, the city ordinance is the same as what we see in, in state law with reference to itinerant carnivals. We've basically copied the state law on that, so the only permits that we issue for carnivals are for itinerant carnivals and not for ones like the Mardi Gras that are held in a stationary building that are, are not itinerant or traveling carnivals.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
And that's, that's the reason why I'm here tonight, is I feel the city should just take the one word out. If they take that word out on that first sentence, then all carnivals are covered by the city. You have oversight over everything. Right now, it's just oversight over the traveling carnivals, and there's no oversight from the city in regards to the local carnivals.
Mr. Cole, in the, when it comes to an itinerant carnival and we issue a permit, does, what is that actually, does that grant the city any particular authority then at that point?
Mr. President, most of the, the language in our city code with respect to carnival permits has to do with like spacing between tents and load occupancy of a tent structure that is put up for an itinerant carnival. I don't think that as it exists, our current carnival permit would really apply to a building or a structure that is not an itinerant tent that is being set up for a short period of time. And when you look at the Mardi Gras- And when you look at the Mardi Gras, we know the occupant load of the building, our police and fire officers are very familiar with the building, they know where the sprinkler systems are, they know what, how many people can be in the building. So in that sense, I'm not sure that there would really be a need or a sense in having a permit for a carnival that is in a building that's not set up and taken down every, every weekend like an itinerant carnival would be.
The prohibited activities listed here, these would be prohibited activities that would be found in the centry code of the state also?
The prohibited activities would be found in state code, that's correct. And again, if there is illegal gambling or gaming going on anywhere in town, not just at a carnival, but anywhere, that is something that is regulated by centry code. I believe it's graded as a Class A misdemeanor, and whenever that occurs, that's something that the state's attorney's office would have jurisdiction to prosecute if that is going on, whether it's a carnival or not.
So we don't prosecute this type of thing in city court?
No, it'd be something that would go through district court as a Class A misdemeanor.
Okay, thank you.
And in regard to that, the reason why I feel that the city should have oversight is because, well, if you read in there, it has in there, before the carnival, then they would have, they would hire somebody from the, from the police department or somebody from the city to come and inspect all their games and make sure that they're legal before the carnival. And then if that is done, then I'm not going to be up here in front of you every year because the city would be doing the same thing. Because they, if they look at it and the police department determines whether that's a legal game or not, then I wouldn't, if I go there, it's, there's not going to be no illegal game being done. And right now, because of this wording, there isn't, there is no oversight before the carnival. It's only afterwards that we go there, and if somebody sees something wrong, then they make a complaint.
Well, Mr. Payne, you just, you just said that earlier, that you filed a complaint, there's been a police report, and it's on the desk of the state's attorney.
State's attorney, right.
So there is oversight.
Yeah, I have to do it afterwards, I agree with you.
But I mean, there is oversight, and it's now up to the state's attorney whether or not he or she feels that this should be prosecuted.
Correct.
Okay.
And this is why I'm asking that if this was taken out, then it would be done ahead of time.
It'll still be up to the state's attorney whether there would be prosecution, whether that word is in there or not.
Yeah, I understand that, but shouldn't the city, they do it with the traveling? Boy, they're really strict when it comes to what they do with the traveling.
We make them come in and get a permit.
Right.
Yes.
And so if they, if everybody, even the locals had to get one, the city would be doing the oversight before the carnival. Because the way it is now, nothing's done unless somebody files a complaint, where the city would be doing it automatically. If they had to have somebody come in and do what this says, you would know before the carnival started.
I think nothing would still be done unless there was a complaint filed, whether it was from a citizen or a police officer. And again, for the activities that this covers, my understanding that, that again would go to the state's attorney.
Okay.
The city doesn't prosecute these types of things.
Right. But now, after that incident last April, and then in May, the city turned over the investigation to the BCI, and they ruled that game was gambling, that Titan touchdown. And now, I go there this time, and they have another one.
That's up to the state's attorney whether or not they're going to prosecute that.
Yeah, correct, but now there's another game.
It doesn't matter to the state's attorney whether we have issued a permit or not.
Right, but I didn't think that they'd be running it after the BCI ruled that it was gambling.
Well, I don't know that it's what you mean by them ruling that it is, but, but you're asking, you're requesting that we change our municipal code to eliminate that one word. That's your request.
Correct.
Okay. And what I would do is invite any of our Commissioners, if, if you would like to, in a sense, sponsor their request, you contact Mr. Kessel and Mr. Coleing, you request that that be done, and at the next available meeting, if you've made that request, then we'll consider the ordinance, consider the change.
Thank you.
Okay, but it will, it'll take one of these five up here to make that request, okay?
Right, I can have it made through Sean or Mr. Coleing then, or?
What I heard President Johnson say is, is one of the Commissioners would have to make that request of one of us to direct changes, as you suggested.
Oh, okay, I see.
If, if we can't get at least one to make the request, then it's, you're not even going to get one vote, okay?
Right.
Do you understand that?
Right.
I mean, we can, we can go ahead and put this up as an ordinance without a request, just purely on your request, but I would suggest that you get at least one Commissioner to agree with you on this, to make the request.
Okay, yeah, I, so this whole procedure is beyond me, so.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, it's all right.
You know, you sat through the entire meeting, you, you saw us act on two or three ordinances, you know that there's two readings to an ordinance, we can schedule public hearings in between the two readings, that's the process. So this would be a one-word change.
Right.
But before we go through that process, I'm suggesting that there be at least one Commissioner that agree with you.
Right.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that's all right.
Otherwise, if we can put it on, you may not have any Commissioners agreeing with you to begin with, and we can go through the process.
But no, that's fine, that's what I came here, I don't know the process, so I mean, doing this.
Well, I, I don't think it's a legal requirement that we have one Commissioner, you know, request this, but I'm just saying, in the, kind of in the interests of, I guess.
But I mean, I feel, I mean, I think I'm right when I say that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that right now, the city has no, no oversight of, of local carnivals.
No, I think you're wrong there, because you said it and others said it, we had police officers that were on-site. So we do have oversight, and if, if a police officer assisted you in filing a complaint, then we are having oversight, whether there's a permit issued there or not.
Right. But what I'm saying is, if that was changed, then according to the, that chapter on carnivals, it covers that, where they would be coming, they would, they would have all their games okay before the carnival. That's all I'm saying. Let's, why not have that done ahead of time instead of?
I, I don't think even when we have an itinerant carnival, whoever's issuing the permit is okaying everything that's taking place there. They're issuing them a conditional permit and saying, "Here's what you should obey, here are the restrictions."
Yeah, because I mean.
We don't sit down.
This municipal code follows the centry code, you know.
But if that's acceptable to you, if we'll, if one Commissioner will request an ordinance change, we'll, we'll go through the formal process. If that isn't acceptable to you, we'll go through the process anyway.
Okay.
How would you like, how would you like to handle it?
Well, I'll just talk to the Commissioners and see if one of them wants to, or they'd be like a sponsor then.
Well, we really don't sponsor them, but I mean, you, you would at least have the support of, you would at least know you have the support of one, kind of going into the process.
Right, okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Payne. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? Not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Oh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, we're adjourned.